Tronson here.
Biscuit Chill here.
And Michelle Garrigan should be here shortly.
We have a quorum, could we stand for the pledge please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, any motion to adopt the agenda?
I actually would like to make a motion to move Agenda Action Item J1 to immediately follow F3.
Can you get a second on that?
A second.
Okay, the motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that'll approve the amended agenda. Okay, citizens and delegations, is there anybody here that would like to speak to something that's not on the agenda? Not on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Okay, so then next would be our student presentation. Maria Arena, you're gonna let us start from doing it.
You bet. We brought the students here tonight. We've got Cormier's finest. We couldn't bring them all, so we just did this group. And Mrs. Layden as well, who's helped us put this presentation together. Tonight, we wanted to showcase an activity that we have at school, right? Called our breakout boxes. And we really have a good time with this, with learning and problem solving and teamwork and breaking out. So, Mrs. Layden's gonna show us a little video that we made. She made. And we broke out a gingerbread man, right?
Yeah.
We got that out and some penguins. So today, we have a Valentine breakout box challenge for the board. Julie, wanna come up and read the directions?
Sure.
Thanks. You can go right in front of those two, too. Go right here, can't you see? Okay, here's the problem.
Mrs. Arena was walking around school with a box full of Valentine's. There's an armload of clues to help her remember the colors of the locks. As she walked around, she dropped the clues in different places throughout the school. We need to find out, I mean, find and figure out the clues that she dropped in order to help her with the Valentine's hour of the box. Please help.
Please help us. Okay, so we got some partners for you. Hope you guys can figure out the clues. And then you can do the line combinations with your partners, so come on up. Oh, we're gonna have our friends introduce themselves, too. Yeah.
I'm Isabelle.
I'm Elliot.
I'm Molly.
I'm Lydia.
I'm Charlie.
I'm Will.
I'm Aiden.
I'm Will.
And last but not least, Aiden, did you say your name?
He did.
Good deal. All right. Okay, Elliot and Isabel, do you wanna come work on your clue?
I hope you can help me, 'cause I have no idea what you're doing.
And Will S. and Lydia? Open up your clue. Yeah. And Lydia, you guys can work on your clue. And Colin and Molly, you guys can all work on your clues.
No, it's like this thing. Okay, let's put it in.
And then Aiden and Will.
So what do we do?
Get the clue out.
We're short one person. Maybe Mr. Lucius would like to try this. We're good to go.
You do this a lot at school. You better help me out.
The numbers in order, smallest to largest.
B, L.
What's your name?
Oh, Lydia, then what's your number?
Do you get that? Okay, when you have your clue, then you can go over and then line it, too, if you think you have it done.
All right, so Elizabeth, is there anything else?
Oh my goodness, this is a challenge. You wanna write this again? What, write O? Look at that. Yeah, I need a pencil. So let's put our clues out here. You wanna write the O? Tell Mr. Van Lannan how he should do this. Or help Sean.
Okay, we'll put it out there. Is there anything else? Nope. So what do we do now?
We have to do the words. We have to mash them all together.
Okay.
We have the dog, so that's right.
Okay, so you want me to do that, or you want me to do it?
I think I could do it.
Okay. Let's see you do it. Is there supposed to be a key?
No. It's just this. Okay, so then we have a letter lock. Okay, you guys can go over and I'll line here. We gotta get these locks out, like you're...
Go ahead and read the next one.
I can't. Now I can't figure out what it is.
Do you wanna walk around that side? Oh, here, we can go over here. So what happened here?
How many you get? Yep, so rest I know.
This one? Okay, we have to find the Y.
Oh, good.
And then you have to put your letters in order. Okay, here, let's...
Some person's good.
I bet you guys prepared numbers today, so it's a fresh challenge.
All right, cool. No, right, yeah, write the number down. Uh, nine. You found a nine?
Slide it over.
Yep.
Okay. Lydia, why don't you... Good job.
These are clues from the maximum. O, I know.
Go under the B.
So three, one, four, five.
There's the two, and O.
Three, one, four, five.
You wanna slide it right here? Molly, slide the O off.
Yeah, so you wrote the number nine.
Sure. Okay. Molly, slide that O over.
Okay.
Get your fingers in there. Okay, Aiden, wanna go with Will? Oops. Right on that B.
You wanna count this one?
O, okay. And then Colin, you wanna slide the D over?
Will, you wanna do the last one?
Push that once, right? Push it over.
All right, great. You wanna write the...
Oh! Look. Let's see, which O. All right, ours is done, you guys. Awesome. High five. Right here. Five up here, Molly. Right there, right here, Colin. All right, let's scoot over so they can get in. You wanna scoot this way?
Tell us, tell us.
Yeah. Tell us, tell us.
All right, I'm gonna move over. So what do we do next?
Well, we gotta draw a lock. So...
Break the corner.
We need the key. Okay, so... Oh, wait, it's not in order.
It's not in order.
Mr. Vander Creek, you messed it up.
Again. So can you see him?
No, I can't move in.
Yeah, you guys can see it.
Okay. We have to...
Yeah, let's scoot that guy.
I'm just moving so you can read it.
You know what? Molly, why don't we come out this way, so they have room? Here, Colin, take mine.
He wants it near yours.
Come out over here.
So you went up and then to the right?
Down, right. Okay. Um, this way's right? Yeah, that way. And now down.
And then down. And then left.
Left?
And then right. Is it open?
Yeah, it's okay.
Ah, it worked. Good job, girls.
Stacking off.
Nice job.
My biggest fear was that it wasn't gonna unlock. It was gonna be all my fault. The meeting, it's gonna be a really long meeting.
Do it.
It's gonna be a...
You can do it.
All right. Hold it.
Nice.
One more.
All right, there you go.
Oh my god, now we have to do it again.
One more?
Last one. I'm gonna put it down here, this is it. Okay.
He lets it... Here, P on the...
The first one, we do seven?
You like the cool persons?
Oh, seven on the bottom?
I cannot see it still. Oh, Mama. Hand it over here when you open it.
Yep.
Mama, open it over here.
Nine? William will put nine?
There we go.
Nine on this, this one.
I love breakout. Oh, someone's pushing me.
Do you guys like doing the breakout game? Do you like that? Is it fun?
Gingerbread.
No, one more, yeah.
Penguins.
There you go, you do ten. Missing.
Yeah, Molly said the gingerbread man is missing. She doesn't really know what happened to it.
She probably took it. She probably took it.
Yeah, and then the last one's five.
Mama.
Before Christmas. Yes, oh, of course.
When it, Mama.
You can really do it for anything.
Mama, when the last lock is off... Mama.
Oh, that's okay. That was nine?
Yep, nine.
Mama, when the last lock is off, um, bring it over here, okay?
My tits. I guess... Yeah, it means be grateful all night. Yeah.
I got it. I guess...
Yeah, it means be grateful all night. Yeah. I got it. I guess... Yeah, it means be grateful all night. Yeah. I got it. I guess... Yeah, it means be grateful all night. Yeah. I got it. I guess... Yeah, it means be grateful all night. Yeah. I got it. I guess... Yeah, it means be grateful all night. Yeah. I got it. I guess... Yeah. I got it. I guess... Yeah.
I told someone what... Mama, I told someone about... Mama, I said open it over here. Over here. Over here. Candy.
There you go. There you go. Woo!
There you go.
Everyone with signs?
All right, we're broke out. We're broke out.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you.
I mean, the biggest...
Yeah. I'm holding up. Everyone with signs?
All right, we're broke out. We're broke out.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for being great sports tonight, everyone.
Thank you.
Awesome. Long as you're here, you wanna make the motion for a longer recess or something?
Listen. Yay, what does this say? You are law. This one says you are epic.
Oh, I like that.
This one says you are...
Do you do the breakout box?
Um, you are a good friend. I like you.
Both of you did well. Why didn't you do both?
And...
There's your name. I love it. Thank you so much. Can I have hugs?
No.
You did such a good job. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you, guys.
Good job, you guys.
Good job.
Good job. Well, good job. Good job. Well, good job. Awesome. Awesome. Thank you.
Mrs. what?
Mrs. what?
Thank you. Parents, if you're welcome, you're welcome to leave as long as you'd like to. You can stay in the school.
Yeah.
Our extended evenings. You need to put the kids to bed. Yeah, thanks to you.
Okay, we have some exciting news for our next item. Viola Adams family donation. Keith?
Okay, it's always hard to follow the Cormier students and all their energy, but this is one time where I think I can match their energy and excitement. We are so excited to have some, have a group here today to talk about the Ola Adams donation. And it's really such a great example for our kids in our community to see how somebody has paid it forward, somebody who really cares about kids and school and what's happening. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk less and hand it over to them so they can talk about this donation. It's such a great donation for our schools, but it is $115,000 that they're donating between our schools and the district, so it's a very large donation. I'm gonna hand it off to Brenda Harold, who's gonna introduce, and they're gonna introduce their group.
Great.
I'm Brenda Harold, and this is my son Bennett. He's at Parkview. And I have Owen at Pioneer in 4th grade.
Nikki Michelson and...
Brian Michelson.
We've got two boys. Drew graduated last year, and Zach is a junior this year.
Shirley Michelson. All of my grandchildren, except my granddaughters, did not go to Ashwabnon, but the four grandsons, Brenda and Brian and Nikki, all went to Ashwabnon schools.
Brian Michelson.
Duro. Smart man.
They are actually the, my parents, Brian and Shirley Michelson, are actually the head of the donor advised fund from Ola Adams. And Bennett's more the public speaker, so he wanted to tell you a little bit about her. So that's all, Bennett.
Can I just say one thing?
Oh, yeah.
We're the trustees, but with a lot of help from our kids and our grandkids, helped to decide where the money went.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
The Ola Adams Fund was started by our aunt through Greater Green Bay Foundation. She was a one-of-a-kind gem. She lived in Chicago most of her life and worked as a teacher and a principal. She gave selflessly and volunteered in many organizations. Look at the crowd. She moved to Ashwabnon in 2004 to be closer to a family residing across from the high school. She always took great interest in her great nephew's education and activities. We would pack her up in a wheelchair and wheel her across the street to see the productions that the high school was putting on. She would have loved the new PAC. The performances were always a highlight for her. When Pioneer started the carnival, she looked forward to going. She never missed a musical or play. She couldn't believe we duct taped our principal to the wall.
Okay, where was that?
Knowing her, she would have allowed the same thing. She died eight months shy of turning 100. Up until then, she would still recall stories of her students and could even remember their names. We were contacted by the foundations shortly before Thanksgiving. We were told the amount in the fund. We were stunned. We got to work as a family deciding where she would want it to be used. Naturally, education was top on our list. We are Ola Ashwabnon graduates and future graduates, except Grandma and Papa. We are proud of our schools and proud to be able to honor her in this way.
Thank you.
We have all the checks issued, except for we are presenting Parkview tonight and Valley View tonight. And we still have the high school to present, but we just made contact and got it all finalized. So she's gonna present the checks.
Who do I present them to?
Well?
Right here, right here.
You see, I was willing to take a check. Everybody knows that.
Oh, you're Valley View?
No, I'm Parkview.
Oh, she's a terrific student. Do you wanna hand it to her?
Yeah. And then we have representatives from each school, if they just wanna tell briefly how they're gonna use the donation.
Okay.
Unless I'm putting you on the spot.
Okay, so Parkview is going to be getting our gymnasium painted. It's the original painting when the school was built. We are also looking at fixing a former computer lab that no longer has computers in it, is an empty room, to remodel it for an idea and a flexible classroom space as well for our students. And I just wanted to add that the giving runs in the family. Bennett is in 7th grade at Parkview, and he recently had a birthday. And rather than having presents, he got money, asked for money, or Grandma and Grandpa and friends gave money, and he donated it to Parkview for his 7th grade peers who could not afford to go on a recent field trip, for them to be able to go.
Wow.
Thank you all.
I'll defer to, we're with the high school. My name's Brian Nelson. And I'll defer to Tom and Dave. They're here representing the tech ed department and the Bo Metler Foundation. And it's something the Michelson boys have been involved in at the high school and continue to be. And we've just been a wonderful job, or they have been doing a wonderful job, creating an innovative tech lab. And this donation is just gonna allow us to continue to pursue that dream for our students. And so, on behalf of me, I just wanna thank you for your generous donation, because this is just going to be awesome for our students as we continue to grow and build that tech lab. So with that, I'll turn it over to Tom or Dave and talk a little bit about what they're planning on doing with the donation.
Actually, I'll turn it over to Jeremy. Jeremy Meyer. The two pieces of equipment we're looking at putting in the lab is directly gonna impact the students. One is what's called a Fab 45. It's a hydraulic shear, and it will also test, well test. Right now, we don't have the capability to, when a student makes a weld, can, how strong is it? The piece of equipment, we also ran into a problem with all the students going through the welding program. The one saw has become the only saw, and it's a slowdown to cutting metal. This hydraulic shear, we can shear our metal real quick, and the students will be able to then test their weld to see, is it strong or not? And it's even something better than what they have at N W T C, so I'm pretty proud of that. The other piece of equipment is a CNC plasma table. Now, they've been out for a while, but this one has a few new options. One, not only can it cut material that we have or whatever we program, it has a camera built in that, we have an art student that wants to cut something on a metal, all they have to do is draw a black line on a piece of white paper. We set it down underneath the piece of equipment, it will program itself by following that black line, which really reduces the setup that we would have to do with drawing. The other thing, it will have an attachment that we can profile cut around to it, which is, there are very few manufacturers in the area that can actually do that, so we're hoping to give back to the community with our capability with that. So, and the last thing I wanna say is, somebody asked me why I came to Ashwabnon three years ago. It's the team, and it's the working together. It's our families and our foundations that work as a team with us, as teachers and administrators and our school board, and I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
So from Valley View, as Chris mentioned, we are also refurbishing former library, or library into, part of the library that was a computer lab into a flexible seating idea lab as well. Certainly, this has been something that's been in the works for several years, but never really had the finances to complete the project. Also, we are completely remodeling our Elementary Playground, and they're excited about the opportunity to do that as well. So, also those things certainly would not have happened as quickly, and we are just blown away by your generous donation, so thank you very much.
At Pioneer, we shared a big, long wish list as a family, and we reviewed flexible seating, basketball hoops, some different furniture arrangements in the, in our library, and how we could affect these funds on as many students as possible. So we're very, very excited. We brainstormed, shared the list together, and we're excited that Ola is gonna affect all of our Pioneer students. It's gonna be so neat. So again, thank you so, so much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
We are gonna use it for playground equipment as well. We, our playground is ready for refurbishing, refreshing, and so we're excited to do that. And also, I wanna mention our apple program as well. That donation will be used for materials and supplies, and also to support parents attending the program, so that is gonna, it's just a gift. Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Now I'll close. Thank you for your time. We won't take up anymore, but I think she'd be very proud and very happy with all the decisions that everybody's making, and we can't wait to see the changes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You got here just in time. It's wonderful.
I'll do her exam. She is here.
I'd like to move on to the consent agenda, which consists of the minutes from the regularly scheduled meeting held Wednesday, January 10th, the minutes of the exec session held Wednesday, January 10th, the minutes of the exec session held Wednesday, January 31st, minutes of the exec session held Monday, February 5th, minutes of the exec session held Wednesday, February 7th, schedule of checks written January 3rd through February 5th. And just so people know, we are hiring a superintendent, and that's why we had the number of exec sessions at that time. Staffing, these are retirements. Retirement of Jill Carstens from her full-time kindergarten instructor position with the district for 25 years. Retirement of Janice Phillips from her full-time cross-categorical position with the district for 28 years. Retirement of Terry Rosenberg from her full-time cross-categorical position with the district for 20 years. Retirement of Randy Swilly from his full-time 6'7" instructor position with the district 24 years. Retirement of Amy Steampack as a full-time physical education teacher with the district 21 years. That's 118 years for those five teachers. And we need a motion.
And the co-contract.
Oh, it's right. We have one co-contract also.
I move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Second. We got a motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
All approved. Okay. H, Assistant Superintendent's report. We are having a great meeting, and I got some awesome things that we get to talk about here as well. First of all, we have some state champions that deserve recognition. The dance team took state in Division 1 Kick recently, and they also took 3rd place in Division 2 overall. So we wanna recognize the dance team. Those ladies do a lot of hard work. The coaches do a lot of hard work, and that's great recognition for them. Second, we have some teachers that were given awards that we wanna recognize. We have two Golden Apple winners in the district. Michelle Lowenhagen at Valley View School and April Moran at Cormier. Both were awarded Golden Apples issue, which is outstanding. We also have another teacher who is awarded a Teacher of Distinction, Sean Butler at Parkview Middle School. And we have a team at the high school of Tom Barnhart, Jeremy Meyer, and Dave Stroud, who are just here. They were also awarded Teacher of Distinction awards through the Golden Apple Program. And then the same group of Tom Barnhart, Dave Stroud, and Jeremy Meyer, who recently awarded the Wisconsin Technology Education Association High School Program of the Year. And for those of you who don't know, we put a lot of time and effort and focus on that program, and it's really showing through in what we're getting, and they have done a lot of work building that program at the high school. And then, to show things don't just go at the high school, at the middle school, the tech ed department of Phil Layden and Corey Hanson were awarded the Middle School Program of the Year by the Wisconsin Technology Education Association. So it starts at middle school and works all the way up to the high school. So there's some awesome things going on. All those teachers deserve a lot of recognition, and the Jay Ward Hanske. Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to discussion presentation items. District goals, program update. Jill?
Good evening.
We are having a great meeting and I got some awesome things that we get to talk about here as well. First of all, we have some state champions that deserve recognition. The dance team took state in Division 1 Kick recently and they also took third place in Division 2 overall. So, we want to recognize the dance team. Those ladies do a lot of hard work. The coaches do a lot of hard work and that's great recognition for them. Second, we have some teachers that were given awards that we want to recognize. We have two Golden Apple winners in the district. Michelle Lowenhagen at Valley View School and April Moran at Cormier. Both were awarded Golden Apples this year, which is outstanding. We also have another teacher who is awarded a Teacher of Distinction, Sean Butler at Parkview Middle School. And we have a team at the high school of Tom Barnhart, Jeremy Meyer, and Dave Stroud, who were just here. They were also awarded Teacher of Distinction awards through the Golden Apple Program. And then, the same group of Tom Barnhart, Dave Stroud, and Jeremy Meyer, who recently awarded the Wisconsin Technology Education Association High School Program of the Year. And for those of you who don't know, we put a lot of time and effort and focus on that program and it's really showing through in what we're getting and they have done a lot of work building that program at the high school. And then, to show things don't just go at the high school, at the middle school, the tech ed department of Phil Layden and Corey Hanson were awarded the Middle School Program of the Year by the Wisconsin Technology Education Association. So, it starts at middle school and works all the way up to the high school. So, there's some awesome things going on. All those teachers deserve a lot of recognition and the Jay Ward Hansen. Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, let's move on to discussion presentation items. District goals, program update. Jill.
This evening, the school principals will be presenting their update for you on their goal progress regarding literacy and math. They each have a PowerPoint slide, they'll be running through some information for you. But to start us out, some of the things I want us to think about and remember as we're looking at our goals this year, first of all, we have the data that we're gonna present tonight, that's based off of STAR data and that gives us more or less an approximation of how our students are doing at this point in time. And as we think about this point in time, we're just a little bit past the halfway mark and so, we're working towards that end of the year goal. So, we want to get more students to the end of the year. So, we're about halfway through. We also went this year, we switched our goal focus. This year, we're really focusing in on our subgroups and the subgroups that we're looking at, special education and then the students of different ethnicities. We're really honing in on them and making sure that we close that achievement gap. As we look at those groups, we're looking at a smaller number of students. If you think about it, the fifth grade level or the eighth grade level, we're looking at about 25% or less, depending on the grade level, of the students that are impacted in those subgroups. As we think about two, what we're looking at this year, what we're actually trying to achieve, we have some pretty lofty goals. What we're doing as we work towards those goals is we're focusing on essential learning. And you'll hear the principals talking about what essential learning is, the areas or the focus of specific standards. We're talking about instructional practice and the principals are spending time in classrooms, they're looking at things that are going on with instruction. And then, they're also talking a lot about data. And we're looking at data as having evidence of student achievement. And I'd like to close before passing it over to Maria, by just thinking about a quote that I saw not long ago, it's "A rising tide lifts all boats." Now, somebody said to me once, "Why are you just focusing on subgroups? Why not all of our students?" And if you think about it, the rising tide lifts all boats, we know that when we work with a specific subgroup, we're really impacting all of our students. And so, I have to give the principals a lot of credit for that because while we focus on a certain number of students, we are really impacting a larger number. So, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mrs. Arena.
So, you can see her goals up here and like Jill said, when she was talking, I just thought of a completely different presentation I'd like to give. No. But one of the things I would like to say is even though we're in the red, we are closing the achievement gap for our students. So, and also, like Jill said, these goals will elevate all of our students. It doesn't necessarily, you know, discern those incremental gains. So, in both reading and in math, we are looking to be, have 57% of our students at a certain percentage or percentile. And, you know, we're working on it. We're working on it diligently here. We have 26% of our students, you might say, "Oh, 26, how could that be yellow?" But this is generally where our students are at this time of the year for reading. So, we know that they will, 90% of our students will probably be at a Level D by the end of the year or greater. And then, also with attendance, we have about 94%. We ended last year with about 94% of our students attending in those groups and we're looking to bump that up to 96%. Down here, we're talking about what's working well and what we want to do and emphasize a little bit more. And one of the areas is definitely special education and talking with and working with our special education and regular education teachers so that we're really honing in and focusing on the specific needs, the IEP goals with our special education students. And also, looking at developing three specific goals for children that are below the 63rd or 61st percentile. So, any questions? All right. Thanks. Thank you.
All right. Moving right on to Pioneer Elementary. We have our reading and we have our math and our attendance goal. So, first of all, as we look at our reading goal, like what Jill shared, we're using our STAR information, which our students are assessed in STAR Fall, Winter, and Spring. And we really use that as our progress monitoring tool throughout the year and our goal is set using the forward exam. So, right now, in reading and math, we are red. Our goal and our whole team is working very hard with our students with special needs and students of minority to move them forward. Our attendance goal is on track, what's working well, our writing units of study, our ABMR training or our math training over a multi-year span, our consistent grade level collaboration time, really focused on students and data and how we can close those gaps, along with our monthly attendance meetings. And lastly, our trauma professional development that our team is receiving this year. To work on, what can we do differently? Focusing, can we continue to focus on individual reading and math growth and really look at the gap areas of every individual student, increasing our collaboration focused on that student reading instruction? And we've also really focused on providing texts that are more interesting reads for our reluctant readers. So, we can really bring in some more nonfiction and fiction texts to really get students who maybe weren't as motivated to read to be more excited about their reading. And also, really implementing a Tier 3 data system using AIMS Web Plus. So, thank you.
Just a question on that before we leave it. For some of those slides that are in red, are we saying that we're starting, we started at 28% and that we're at 21% now?
Correct.
Okay.
That's last year we were at.
Yes, and that's last year's data.
At the end of the year? So, it's not comparing the same group of kids. Last year, we were at 28%. We're trying to stretch it to get up to 31% with this year's kids. So, that's why you see them a little below where last year ended.
So, they'll, so you'll review this again at the end of the year?
Yes.
And that's when you're hoping to get to the standard that you set? When do we start the STAR data?
Just last year.
Just last year, right? I didn't think it was that long. So, then, when these kids are in fifth grade, the third graders are in fifth grade, we'll have some historical analysis to go by.
Yes. Some nice trends, we'll see.
Good question. We're just talking about that.
So, I think important to note, back to Jay's question, but even though we're focused on these subgroups, we are constantly working to move all kids forward. And so, just don't feel like we've lost focus on the other students as well. Our, just our concentrated focus is looking at this data, analyzing this data, but we are constantly looking at trying to help our high achieving students excel even further, helping our average students continue to grow. So, it's moving all students forward. So, even though these are our goals, we're still continually working on helping everyone move forward. So, please understand that. Again, these are students who are historically have underperformed and kids that we're trying to move along and trying to figure out exactly what parts of their instruction or things that we can increase or improve upon in order to make it better. So, at Valley View, again, just like Pioneer, we are focused on our third to fifth graders underperforming in special education and our Native American group going from 28 to 31 in the area of reading and in the area of math, moving from 37 to 40. So, you might look to say, "Well Kurt, your goal is 28 to 31, you're already at 36%. Why is it yellow and not green?" And so, I think it's important for you to know that we use STAR as an indicator to where we want our kids to be, but we're evaluated on the school report card on the Wisconsin Forward Exam. And so, as Jay mentioned, we've only been using STAR for a year, so we still need to see historically, is that gonna be a great indicator of how we're gonna score on the forward exam? And so, we're a little bit cautious and so, that's why, if you notice the yell, that's the reason for that.
Okay, then, will this move into middle school? Do you guys do start also?
Yes.
Okay. So, pretty much.
Obviously, we know that if our students aren't in school every day, or if they come to school and they're not emotionally or behaviorally prepared to learn, we're not gonna reach them the way that we really want to. So, we also have two goals that address both attendance and then social, emotional as well. So, if we look at our attendance goal, it was to look at, again, our underperforming group, which for us was our Native American students who were not attending school at the same attendance rate as our other students. And so, we want to increase that attendance rate from 90% to 92%. This year, we've continued something that we started a few years ago, which is monthly attendance meetings, where Kurt and I sit down with our school liaison officer, our school social worker, and our school counselor to talk about students who are not attending school at the rate we would expect, which for us is 90%. Anytime a student is attending less than 90%, we start having concerns and sitting down with parents and trying to find ways to improve that. We also, anytime any of us visit with a parent, we always leave a card that kind of gives some things that they, parents can do, who to reach out to if you're concerned or your child is having trouble coming to school for these reasons, please contact the school counselor and they can help you with some of those types of things. If your child is, if you're having transportation issues, contact our school social worker. Trying to help parents realize that we want to be a team with them and we want to work with them to find solutions for some of the barriers that they're facing. So, you can see that this year, both students, their attendance rate has increased to 96% of our students have met that goal. So, we've had a nice improvement in that area. We also want to seek ways to help students who have emotional learning disabilities or who have a background of trauma to come to school more prepared to learn and to find things that we can do to help those students. One of the ways that we've done that this year is something called Zones of Regulation, which is teaching our students to recognize like what their body feels like when they're feeling really angry or when they're feeling sad and to recognize those feelings within themselves and then to be able to learn strategies to help them to kind of get themselves what we call the green zone, that zone where they're ready to learn and they're kind of ready to be successful. And so, we continue to teach all of our students with a special focus though on our special education students, what that feels like in their body, what sorts of skills they can use to get their bodies ready. And as a result of that, our goal was to decrease disciplinary referrals for special education students to 247, major disciplinary referrals down to 220. At this point, a little bit over halfway through the year, we're at 92, so we think that we're on track to meet that goal. So, again, we kind of are trying to have a holistic approach, looking at the academic needs as well as looking at attendance and behavior and emotional readiness for learning.
So, what's working well? We talked a lot about vision and direction and planning and really feel like our writing units of study has really increased not only all students in the area of writing, but certainly has helped our students who are challenging, as Andy was mentioning about some of our behaviors. Usually, writing was a trigger and something that maybe some of our students struggled and really have seen through this new implementation of Lucy Cockings, you know, say that that has really decreased. Identifying, as Jill mentioned before, those three to five essential learning targets, what do we expect every student to leave first grade being able to do in both reading and math? Same thing all the way up through each of the grade levels and really concentrating on making sure that all of our students can do those three to five essential learning targets. The next piece, one of our areas of focus has been our students with disabilities. We've really increased and ramped up our co-teaching part of practice at Valley View. Really feel excited about that. A lot of pre-teaching, trying to get our kids to be successful prior to teaching the lesson so that they have a good understanding, can participate in class, they've seen that activity ahead of time a little bit, so then they can be able to be successful in class. A consistent approach, as Andy mentioned, with our Zones of Regulation and then our monthly attendance meetings. What we're going to do differently, talk a lot about being data-rich, information-poor, taking that data and really identifying kids and putting a name with the data rather than just saying, "This is how Kurt is performing" or "These are how this group of kids are performing." Now, we're putting a name. We're gonna say Kurt Wires. What can we do to help Kurt Wires be successful? Monitoring and evaluating our IEP time, talking about that pre-teaching piece, supporting new ways to support our learning for special education through co-teaching or modifying those IEP goals. And then last, implementing a new AIMS Web to help our Tier 3 and our special education students. So, questions?
Thank you.
We are going to talk about where we are at for our middle school learners tonight. So, our first one is regarding reading and again, remembering that this is last year's data, so we're talking about a new group of students. It is notable that we are referring to 193 students in our target group. So, our goal for reading was to go from 13 to 18%. Based on our winter STAR data, we are at 12.7. So, we are hopeful that we can still get near that 18% range, but again, this is a predictor for the forward, so we don't know for sure what that will look like in spring. Our math, we are on track for our goal, which is also 13% growing to 18%. And for our January, February STAR results, 17.46% for that, for that group of students that we are referring to.
For attendance, we had that 90% goal, we're at that 94.53. We did keep it yellow just because we always want to keep trying to get kids to school. We know that at the end of the school year, we start to see sometimes a decline and just keeping that pulse on them and making sure that they're staying for the whole day. A lot of that is the first hour, but we want to make sure that they stay the full day, they're not leaving early and they're getting in the classroom and they're staying in the classroom.
Okay, so what's working well? Well, we think that our implementation of a 30-minute academic focus period this year has really helped our students in making gains because during that 30 minutes, which is from 11:00 to 11:30 each day, students are able to, number one, get interventions in both math and reading and then, secondly, they are able to access teachers who they may not have time to see either after school, before school, or be able to talk to during a regular class period. So, if I'm struggling in math but, or I didn't understand a lesson that I had today in seventh hour, I can request my math teacher for the next day to go see him or her in academic focus and get assistance during that 30 minutes. In addition to the reteaching and the intervention, we also have retake time. So, if a student does do poorly on an assessment, they get that reteaching with their teacher. They then have the opportunity to retake the assessment. Well, they can now schedule it during academic focus time versus trying to squeeze it in during lunch period or after school during pastor, whenever the case may be. The other part that is beneficial for our 30 minutes of academic focus is homework completion time. And if everybody, if someone has their homework all done, they're not in intervention, they don't need to retake anything, they get 30 minutes of silent reading time. Brian and I cover academic focuses in our commons on Tuesdays and Wednesdays and we have anywhere from 20 to 40 students and you could hear a pin drop. Like, it's almost like a downtime for everyone to just regroup in the middle of their day. So, we're finding a lot of positive results with that. And then, a direct correlation is that we have less students in our lunch homework help on a weekly basis. Lunch homework help is for students who are earning two or more apps on Monday morning, we have them in lunch homework help to get assistance on completing that work and improving some of their grades. Less students in lunch homework help because of academic focus and intervention time.
The other thing that's working well and we know how important it is to get kids to school 90% more of the time, is that attendance and having those weekly meetings. We've done that in the past, but we have really ramped it up with a bunch of people coming together and looking at kids' attendance and the patterns of their attendance. We also have been making, or I've been making with our liaison officers, with our school counselor, with our social workers, more home visits to go out and visit the family and see if we can help in any way. Is there something that's happening with the student that they need assistance from us or could we offer them support to get to school? So, that has really helped. Just the parent phone calls and really being a team when we work with it. I think that all of us have, all of us have that attendance goal and we've been working closely together to talk because a lot of our middle school kids have, or they have students that are going to Pioneer, the high school, Valley View, Cormier. So, talking and bringing the whole family together, so it's just not getting one kid to Parkview, it's getting all the kids to the school so we can have that.
Another piece that's working well for us that we shared with our staff is that we want to continue our focus on trauma-informed care and talking about how trauma affects our students and what that does to their learning in the classroom so that it can help us meet. help us meet their needs academically and emotionally.
What we'll be doing differently? We are really working as a staff in a school to complete a focused data analysis on students. We want to start looking at what is actually working. We've implemented a lot of different things. We have interventions for the kids, but let's see how, because STAR is our indicator, we want to see when they took it in the fall versus the winter, how are they doing? Are they improving? If we have a kid in a four-day intervention, we should see gains. And if we're not seeing gains, we need to think of what else do we have to do or what can we do for that student? We want to look at attendance. If kids aren't attending more than 90 percent of the time, is that affecting them on their STAR results or their scores? And, you know, just looking at any one of those factors, special ed kids, the services that they are getting, are we doing the right thing or do we need to look at things to change in order to improve and help those kids be successful? The other thing I think Kurt mentioned was, we learned from a conference, just the term "humanizing our data," that it's not just a number. When we're looking at it, we're looking at kids. And we want to make sure that we are pushing kids. What we told staff today, yeah, we have some that are in the red, but if we look at our data, we moved some kids that were pretty low, they moved a lot of points on that STAR. We look at kids that moved almost 300 points. It's not going to show up and give us a higher percentage of those kids, but they are moving and we're working in the right directions. And I think that's what we got to be proud of and we got to keep looking at that face of that kid and say, "What can I do for him or her to keep moving on so we can get them into a green area?"
And then in correlation with that, next week, Wednesday, we're going to be meeting with a woman from CSU, she's going to speak to our admin team to talk about our school report card. And how can we get the most bang for our buck and see the most growth with our students? So if we look at students that are in below basic, what do we, what do we need to do? How close are they to getting to basic and then to proficient and to advanced? So we're hoping that that is also going to help us in that, what we do to increase results. And then lastly, and in conclusion, we're going to be looking closer at our special education services and determining if we need to make some changes because one of the things that we know is that we, if we don't curb the behaviors, we're not going to be seeing improvement in our academic results. And so that's one thing that we really want to focus on in the coming year and then continuing our monitoring of attendance. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for putting that slide up. That was going to be the most difficult part of my presentation was figuring out which button to hit on the computer to go to the next slide, so. But our, you know, our goals, similarly you've heard, are based on the ACT test because that's the data that goes into determining our school report card. And so when we write our goals for the following years, we're using last year's ACT data. So, when you look at our reading goal, we'd like 11th grade students in historically underperforming groups achieving the college and career benchmark of 22. That's a goal in each of the subsets. ACT says 22 means that as a student, you're academic and career-ready. In reading, we'll increase from 28 percent to 31 percent. And one of the challenges at the high school has been that we're data-poor. And by that, I mean, we, we give the ACT test and we give the ASPIRE test to ninth and 10th graders. We've been searching for a tool to progress monitor, you've heard "humanizing the data." And so we've been looking at, how can we assess students, put a face to the data and then create interventions to ensure that we're moving kids forward? And so, part of that is looking at, our second year in STAR now, and right now, we're at yellow in terms of reading. The STAR predictor would say that 15 percent of our students are college and career-ready, we're a little behind. The ACT ASPIRE predictor is a bit higher than that. Really, what I've been utilizing the STAR data for is that progress monitoring tool. And we'll see how that acts as a predictor. But when the kids take the STAR test, we are able to go in, teachers are able to go in and quickly identify the student's level, where their current strengths and weaknesses are, what standards they're deficient in, and then how can we work instructionally to move the kids forward? And so that's been very successful. So for example, if I'm teaching an English nine class, I can pull that roster up and I can see a STAR data report, which kids are in the green, which kids are in the yellow, which kids are in the red. It'll outline where there may be deficiencies, but it'll create an awareness of Brian Nelson needs to improve in these areas to move that student forward though, so that they can better demonstrate what they know on the ACT test. So, the STAR test in my mind has been most effective in that progress monitoring tool. When we look at ASPIRE, we're getting closer at the halfway point of that 28, 31 percent range of reading. Some of the things that we've done that are working well is this year, we implemented Literacy Lab. So we went into STAR data, we looked at some of the forward assessment, and then we also looked at ACT data and we were able to identify students that were reading in that 14 percentile or below. And what we did was create what I would call Tier Three intervention, where we've developed small groups that are working with English Language Arts teachers who have their reading certification. And those students are getting direct reading instruction in an effort to move them forward and improve their reading skills. Similarly, in special education, we did the same process. We have a special education teacher that is also a licensed reading teacher. We've identified students in that percentile profile that I described and we're doing small group instruction with targeted students to improve their reading skills. Another thing that we did was each of the teachers is required to write a, either individual or department, SLO. SLO is a specific learning objective that is measurable. And we asked each of the teachers at the high school this year to write a specific reading goal that they would like to accomplish in their classroom that's measurable and that they're able to demonstrate that we'll be moving forward in the area of reading across all curriculum areas. So that's gone well in terms of reading. Math, am I forgetting anything? Okay. Math, we have the STAR predictor for 22. We have underperforming groups, we want to hit that 22 benchmark in 19 to 22 percent on the ACT. Here, we're doing pretty well. Our STAR predictor is at the top end of that. And then our ACT ASPIRE is well beyond that. So, the kids, what we've done in math is within our academic focus, similarly, we've used STAR data to put a name to the face of students who are struggling in math and then we've created interventions for those students. Part of that is the academic focus period where we have paired students that are struggling in math and during that period, every day, they're assigned to a math instructor. And part of that time is spent homework help if they're in a math class, or it might be pre-teaching a lesson for the next day, it might be reviewing, it might be doing Khan Academy to improve skills identified by the STAR test into areas where we can move those kids forward. So, we've also have math time intervention where students can seek out a math teacher at lunchtime if they need help. And then similarly, we're utilizing, in special education, a skinny 45-minute period where students who fall into that 14th percentile, that's been our number in reading and math, where if they are struggling, they're assigned to a resource directly with a special ed instructor on improving their math skills as identified by the STAR test. So, data-driven instruction, data-driven interventions. And then similar to Kurt had referenced it though, it's not just students, the goal is to move every student forward. So, while I referenced intervention groups for students that need help, we also have a group of AP KELT kids that meet with a teacher for 30 minutes every day for help too. And so, if we can move every student forward, take them where they are, move them forward, our student achievement will continue to move forward. And so what I'm excited about is the STAR testing, giving us data to put a face to a name and clearly identify the skills that the students need in order to move forward. And so, it'll be interesting to see what the next year or two brings as we, I think Jay, I heard, referenced historical data because we're using STAR data now in first grade, all the way through 10th grade. And so, what will eventually happen is a ninth-grade English teacher can go and see, "Well, how did this student do in reading in fifth grade?" And so there's power in that. And, so I'll stop because Dirk's going to talk about, we have an attendance goal unless anyone has any questions at all.
How many students are in your target group?
Target group?
Do you know how many students are in the?
Oh.
Oh, you're looking at about?
13 percent of our student bodies in special education. So, what did you say, Jill?
120.
120. So, any other questions? Dirk will talk, Dirk managed our attendance goal and does a very nice job.
Okay. Our attendance goal likewise is to help students of all, of all types improve. And so we have a couple different categories in our, in our attendance goal. And I'll read a script here. Attendance forming subgroups, which is Hispanic, Native American, and African American. We determine that based on average attendance, which is less than the, than the overall school average. So, attendance for students in underperforming subgroups will improve from 90.93 percent, that's last year's data, to, and what we're looking for is a 91.33 percent for Hispanic groups. If you go over to the left-hand side, you can see we're at 91.22. So we're between last year's data and our goal for this year, so we put that in yellow. From 91.75 to 92.25 for our Native American students, and you'll notice we're at 91.76, likewise between last year's data and what we'd like to be for this year's data. For our African American or Black students, from 92.29 percent to 92.79 percent, you'll notice we're currently at 93.22 percent there with our African American students, so we are above where we had intended to be at the end of the year. And then if you go up to the top, attendance for all students will improve from 94.3 percent to 94.8 percent, and we're currently at 94.92 percent. So we're, we're a little ahead with our overall student data as well. Some things we're doing, some things that are working well regarding attendance, and you'll hear some repeats from other buildings because we work as a district attendance team and we share a lot of ideas and steal things from each other. Home visits. And we target those home visits based on, on what we know about the needs of the students. So I've done home visits alone with our police liaison officer, with our social worker, with the Native American coordinator, with guidance counselors, with the special ed case manager, depending on the needs of the student and who has a working relationship established with someone, you know, we'll target those home visits based on, on how we're hoping to help and things like that. We do monthly staff updates, and I'll talk about that in a little bit in terms of some things we're doing differently. We have monthly attendance committee meetings involving me, counselors, school nurses, our health reasons associated with students, our Native American coordinator, the police liaison, all those kinds of people. We have continued coordination with Jeff Everett's, our new police liaison officer, and Court. And we'll even share attendance data back and forth on a weekly basis with Court for particular students and things like that. So there's a lot of, a lot of communication back and forth there to help students and their families get, get in, just get to school on time. Some things we're doing a little differently. You've heard, you know, putting faces to names and things like that. We actually maintain a list for our three targeted subgroups of our top 20 students in each of those categories, which I share with staff. So we know who the top 20 students in these categories are. I have further labels for everything from homeless status to health things to other issues like that that I want teachers to be really aware of as they work with students. That's been very helpful. That list changes, of course, so we, so we update that and monitor it. Another thing that we've, that we've taken on in terms of monitoring, to reach out to students who are on our attendance lists, not just necessarily staff who currently have one of those students in class, but as you know, teacher-student relationships are a powerful draw. And so we've encouraged teachers who may have had one of these students two years ago to make a phone call to reach out. And we found that some of the students that have had a student for even a couple of years is a, is a powerful way of staying connected and keeping them involved in school. Any questions?
Dirk, are you talking about more of a mentor type of program? These teachers are reaching out these kids as a mentor or?
As a mentor, as an advocate, as someone that the student knows and trusts, you know, it really all depends on, on the kind of relationship. In some cases, there's very much a mentor. In some cases, it's an advocate. In some cases, it's just someone they happen to know well.
Yeah, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
As we bring this to a close, Michelle asked a really good question, but I wanted to put some perspective in there. We think about our goals, we're looking at fifth-grade students, we're looking at 63 students out of our entire fifth-grade population. When we talk about our eighth-grade goals, we're looking at 85 students. And then as we look at the ninth and 10th graders combined, that's 122 students. So it's a smaller number of students. And so, what we see is we really see it. And then to put some perspective on our STAR goals, I'm going to date myself because I'm older, I'm probably older than most of you in the room. When I was in grade school, we had the Presidential Fitness Award. So, oh, good, some of you are nodding, okay. 50 percent, when you were in the 50th percentile, that was considered average. That's where we wanted to be. But when we look at STAR, we are asking our students to be in the 61st percentile. And that's in reading. When we look at math, we're asking our kids to perform at the 76th percentile. So when we look at those numbers and we think, "Oh, those are low," we have higher standards. We're really trying to stretch our kids. And so, I have to give the building principals a lot of credit because they're really doing a nice job of identifying students, talking about students, and looking at ways that they can support all students. To wrap things up, I just wanted to bring this to a close by talking about from building, now looking at the district, because Brian Haines and I are doing some things to keep us focused this year. We're meeting with the building principal and when we're there, we talk about assessments, not just the STAR data, but we want to talk about common assessments. We want to talk about what's happening in math, in unit study, what are they doing in writing? We also talk about what's happening in the math classroom. When you walk into a math classroom, what are you seeing? And they're able to talk to us about it. We're drilling down into that data. We've looked at classroom data and talked to principals about that. And the bottom line is Dr. Haines and I are saying, "We want evidence." And the principals have done a very, very good job of getting that to us. One of the things that I've been spending time with is I've been working with, or sitting in on collaboration meetings, and teachers are talking about tests, they're talking about data, they're talking about students. I've seen teachers up there modeling how to teach a math concept. So there's some really good things happening as a result of our focus on goals. So, I really want to applaud their, their fine efforts. And if you have any questions about any of this data, you can certainly contact a principal or you can give me a call and we can pull specific numbers for you. So, with that- So with that, go ahead.
So the number of this, like 85 eighth grade students, is that like for each school? Was it because that one year because that's what we have the data from?
When we set our goals, what we, this is kind of, I'll try to reduce my answer. What we do is we look at longitudinal data. So when we looked at our past fifth grade class, we saw that 1 percent of our students were at grade level in that subgroup. That's where we're going to start. And I think in the, when we looked at our fourth grade data, we know that they were considerably lower based on their forward data. But we still wanted to stretch them, so we started at a higher point. And if you, I have, sorry, if you'd like to look at, that's really kind of interesting to see how our subgroups and how our grade levels have performed over time. Because that's what we look for when we study data. We really want to look at trends. I don't know if that made sense?
Yeah, yeah, so.
I can piggyback. So what we do, why the building numbers were a little higher at times was what we do, because some of our suburbs are smaller, like middle school, seventh grade subgroup data altogether. So it's a better indicator of what that proficiency level is for that entire. So instead of, for example, we might only have one or two students in one of the subgroups. Well, we'd never isolate that subgroup. So we try to, sometimes at the elementary school, we'll look at third, fourth, and fifth grade in one pool. At the middle school, sixth, seventh, and eighth. So we'll pool it together sometimes. So we just, but some of the data that was shown was combination third through fifth.
Okay.
So we do that because it gets rid of those jumps when the numbers are, we might have a higher subgroup in fifth grade than we do fourth grade. So when we look at it as a pool, it's better data.
Great, okay.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you. If you have any questions, you know, for the fitness.
Okay, moving on. We would have Nick and Fitness Center proposal.
Yeah, just part of your board packet was the preliminary idea for the new fitness center area that was approved at one of the previous meetings. Put that in by our coaches and our staff in order to make that space flow and be as efficient as possible. It's a little bit smaller than the current fitness area. But in talking with our coaches, they said, we can make this work and let's take a look at how we can get it set up. So I worked with some fitness companies to, and part of your packet was that layout that they liked best. And in turn, that cost a little bit of money for some new equipment. The equipment we have upstairs right now would not fit in that space with that layout that was proposed. So what I'm asking is for us to be able to go out and fundraise some money for new equipment in the fitness center. The cardio equipment that's in that preliminary design is all existing. So that's not part of the expense, but the weights and the racks and some of that equipment would be.
Non-budget items.
Correct.
So it would be no money off of, you'd be seeking fundraising efforts.
Correct. And similar to some of the other projects of recognition on, you know, on the wall and some of those sorts of things. I haven't really worked too closely with Keith on that yet as far as. Any thoughts or concerns going out and seeking some money?
You said some of the old equipment would not fit in here?
The rack station specifically, the new design are a skinnier version. And if we were to put those back-to-back in the new area, it's about 30, 29 to 30 feet wide. And they would take up about 19 or 20 feet. So just room to maneuver would not be safe.
What's your plan with that?
And potentially give down to Parkview. Some of the stuff we would maintain up there, some of the equipment for adaptive PE. And then some of the equipment, there might be some value on if some other schools are interested. Really doesn't have a trade-in value. So that's kind of that, what is, what are the pieces of PE that, what can we maintain? And what should we bring back, what should we bring down and what can we pass along?
That, that fall is 19 years old. It came when the field house addition was completed. And so the racks that Nick described in terms of design and technology and some of those other things that's evolved during, you know, the last 20 years or so. It's all good stuff. It's iron, it doesn't wear out. It's just, does it fit? And with engineering and change and all those other things that.
Maximizing space, right?
Right.
And that's really the big thing is, we just need to be creative and potentially get some new equipment.
So with this equipment though, it would be updated, but it would essentially serve the same amount of student population. Like I was just up there the other day. So it would be the same amount of racks, they're just different, so they're more narrow.
We would, we would go from about seven racks to ten.
I think it's a great idea. I mean, if you can raise the money, that's great.
So I think the question that we need feedback from the board on is, one is fundraising. Are you okay if Nick goes out and starts fundraising? And two, the bigger question is if Nick is fundraising and somebody, a company is willing to donate significant dollars, are you okay with? Who are you okay with as far as categories of donors? What types of things would be okay and what things wouldn't be? So Nick has some guidance as he starts talking with people who might want to have their name displayed in the fitness center. Are you okay with that?
I would think.
Don't we have a policy on the types of donors that we could? And that's part of it. I want to make sure you're comfortable that if we remodel this area, make it a brand-new fitness center, you're comfortable that some of those, we will follow those guidelines and you're comfortable with that and having that if we have donors who are putting in significant amounts of money that we can recognize them.
I always just think of making sure that the donors, what you're to display is going to be as professional and it looks, you know, fits in with the whole environment that you're trying to portray.
You know, the only thing I would add to that is that, you know, we have people from. We just talked about the prom committee was out there. And something from my background, when we were doing fundraising, well, it's probably been 10 years ago, the overlap.
Correct. And that's part of the, part of the getting a list of some of those potential people that have an interest in this, not just going to, typically give, are you willing to give to this? So it's really strategic on who we're going to be going to and knocking on which businesses.
We had people that, you know, they were getting, people knocking on their door four different times from four different groups in Ashwabanon schools within a couple of weeks.
Correct.
So it's just so that you know who's, who's, who's different businesses. And then the other point would be, especially in this, in this area, being mindful of some of those contributors that, that we may purchase from or have purchased from in the past. And, you know, looking for donations that may equate future business. And even, you know, so that we don't step on someone's toes. And I think.
Ryan, I'm going to stop you there. We can't equate future business with donation.
I know that, I know that. I'm just saying, or past business.
You've got to make sure past business, Eric, any business is completely separate from donation.
Correct, I understand. Yep. So just be mindful of that, that's all.
Absolutely. Any other feedback or questions?
I think it's good to recognize them.
Let's put a plug in for the Taste of Ashwabanon. It's a month from today. I believe it's one month away. It's, we guess signs are out and I know Michelle and Brian have tickets. Awesome event, so.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt, you are up. 10-year facilities improvement plan.
Well, every year, we prepare a 10-year capital facilities improvement plan. That's part of the budget process. You guys have an opportunity, the school board has an opportunity to take a look at the plan. And we're basically approving the merits of the items that are in the plan. We're not actually committing any dollars tonight to the budget or to the plan, but that's important to remember. Now is entertain, I guess, any questions you have with a focus on the 2018-19 proposed improvements and any other questions you might have regarding that plan.
And I'd just like to say that this is a 10-year plan that we've always moved forward. We can, that gives Tom the ability to move money around, to take care of those needs and then move those other items back if needed.
Correct.
And it's worked out well. And it's been going on since Mike Bena was probably first started here. So this is the plan we've always had.
To, we never go out to referendum for any of our building improvements, boilers, roofs, or anything. So maintaining the merits of the plan are really, really important, so.
Obviously, this year is, the high school is going to be the big focus point.
Correct. And demoing of the cafeteria, the old cafeteria and moving forward in the phase three of that plan that I presented, where we relocate potentially the district office into the high school area, so.
Tom, is that $300,000, is that all your money or is that Betsy's money also?
Well, it's just, Betsy has a different fund balance that's also going to be allocated to the project.
Okay. We will use the food service fund money for, for anything that we can use the food service fund for before we use this one.
And additionally, there's, you know, as part of the phase two of the health.
As part of running our self-funded health insurance plan, we've built up a fund balance. And this is one of the, the clinic is one of the things that has saved us money. So we're going to invest some of that money getting our clinic on site. So we're going to use the fund balance in our self-funded health insurance fund to build out of the clinic and the high school.
The question is, is that, you know, in the 10-year plan, why are we waiting for 10 years to do those safety concerns? Why wouldn't that be moved up sooner?
Well, that's a really good question. I thought it was important to earmark that in the plan because of the nature of it. But I think what we really need to do before I can move that forward and place it in the plan is that we need to be careful conversations about how that safety would work, what our expectations are and stuff like that. But, so I have it in the plan, I have it out there, and certainly it can be moved forward, you know, quickly in the future because with the plan, I can, you know, not every, not every roof isn't going to fail at the same time. So we do take a look at those, we can, that money, what the expectations are as far as that safety, the safety items require.
Remember I sent out that email giving you some ideas of all the questions we'd have. And before we could put a hard dollar amount, we put a ballpark number in the buildings for that amount. And we need to have that discussion of what exactly is, and how effective will it be? And is, and talk through that. So then we can move things forward. And we can always move it wherever you guys want to place it. This is, this is your roadmap for where things go. The things that are in bold are typically things that are timed out because they need to be done that time or very close. But we test roofs going right up when we have them on there. Into that deferred maintenance where you start having issues with it. So we can move things forward, all of that's what you want to do. We just need to have that dialogue at a board open meeting to talk about what we're looking at doing and what level of changes we want to put in at each building.
So how do we start that process? It needs to be in an open meeting, so.
So it would need to be an agenda.
It would definitely.
An agenda item.
Based on the criteria that I sent out. And to be honest, when I sent that out, I didn't hear back from any board member saying, yes, no, this is the level, this is reasonable. So what I asked Tom to do was just put a ballpark number in and put it out at the end. We'll find a meeting where we have a lighter agenda and that as a discussion item and we can.
So are these based on a specific need or is this just a holding spot?
Just the safety is just kind of a ballpark number holding. But if you look at from year to year, all the buildings, think time, all the safety is out in the last year of the plan.
Out because we typically have between 500 and 650,000 in that capital improvements plan. And so it's important to take a look at what's coming up in the future, what those costs are going to be and balance that out. And if you, if you notice the second tab where it shows that, you can see that we've basically balanced that. You know, a million dollars in a particular year. But we do have the ability to move some of those projects around. And as we get closer, we analyze them and say, you know, if it's a roof project, no, we did a, we did an inspection of the roof and we think that it'll last another, you know, easily another five years. And then we can move that kind of stuff around.
That's a cost. And we try to be conservative when we estimate those costs because it's easier to come back and say, oh, that roof section came in 10% under what we have, 10% over, we've got to figure out what to do. And then the other variable you've asked, that we asked me about earlier, is Fund 46. And we started Fund 46 two years ago, so that fund is a big savings account. With using that after, we have to, the money in there has to sit for five years before we can start spending it because it's a savings account. But then we can look at some of these and we may be able to combine, say roofing projects while they're already on site and do more sections of the roof all in one year and get some efficiencies and savings because they've already mobilized, they're on site. We'll have some flexibility in this. This is kind of our roadmap of where we go. It's good for staff to know on some of the other projects that, yes, we're listening and they're out there. It's good for you to know, these are the big things we have coming up. And that's really what the plan is. But it's still, when we get to that year, we're going to look at that and say, okay, do we really need to do that parking lot or that roof? We get two years away and we have to move that roof section forward because we're seeing some degradation. For example, two years ago, two or three years ago, the Cormier parking lot was like, okay, we need to get this thing done. And Tom was able to push that back because of drawbacks that were happening and things that were happening.
We got the majority and a small addition out of that parking lot.
The parking lot is redone. We didn't put the drive in because we've been able to reshuffle things and we're going without it to see if we're able to have. But that all money always in that budget at that time.
And you'll see also that that particular turnout is, was pushed back. That's 22, 23. We do move that stuff around based on need and based on importance, so.
I understand the budget, but when you get items on here, you know, regarding security and safety. Now, those are things that we need to keep in the loop here and prioritize. At least have a, you know, safety and security concerns that we want to address, right?
And if something is an immediate need safety item, it gets done that year and we would push things back. These other things, this is something we've got to talk a little more, how immediate we want to do and what do we want to do. But if the board feels strongly that this is an immediate need that we need to address today, we could move it forward and reshuffle some things and get some, get those projects started. It's a night of events today, it may be where we need to go.
So I think it's worthwhile having the discussion going away.
So you want to put something together for us in future weeks?
Yes, we'll do something like this, this spread.
Okay. Thank you.
And Scott and Jamie with our five-year.
Technology budget.
I'm doing all the talking, Jamie's the eye candy. Kind of break down our budget into four major categories. So this year, well, there are always infrastructure, internet, hardware, and services. I guess here we're looking for 11.5 for infrastructure, 53 for internet, 436 for hardware, and 108 for services, which comes to about 608.5. Interruptable power supplies at Cormier, Pioneer, and Valley View. And then we're going to be replacing the wireless and the network switches at Cormier. The firewall or internet is basically our ongoing costs for our firewall and content filtering. Hardware, this year we're replacing all of the one-to-one Chromebooks at the high school at Parkview. A number of iPads for 4K and kindergarten. And then high school tech ed desktop replacements, business ed laptop replacements. A lot of money that was spent in the past to get the projectors in the room, well, now they're coming to the point where they have to be replaced. So we have these ongoing projector and then security camera replacements that die on this.
Scott, now, so the stuff that you're replacing, is there any value still in those?
So the stuff that we can, a lot of the equipment that we are, we will reuse. This year, we have staff laptops that are being replaced. So we're in the process right now of replacing all the staff laptops. The old ones, they're outside of warranty, but we're going to have 275 of them. So we'll have enough that we can reuse to replace super-old laptops and buy us more time. Other companies that buy them for parts and things like that. And I think last year, when we sold our old Samsungs, we made like $10,000 or $12,000.
We actually used that money last year, and I think when it was, we had one of the board CSO for schools. We use that for the CSO for schools, because we kind of offset that money. Making sure all that, so even if you sell, if you can sell those Chromebooks for $50 a Chromebook, you're going to have at least $50 in, making sure everything's properly wiped and everything is set, so.
Chromebooks make that, make that a little easier, you can hard wash them, and they're, there's, it's different than a laptop.
It's the laptops, we always think, boy, we're going to get a couple hundred dollars for these things. We move this equipment, and then some of the equipment, like the infrastructure stuff, when we replace switches now, we pay to get rid of that, because there's heavy metals and other things in there that have to be recycled. So I don't want you to think that the equipment we're selling, we're going to have a move on.
No.
I'm happy in a year when we break even on the old equipment. Use them as spares and checkout machines, and then we'll dispose of ones that we can't. And they'll be properly cleaned, they're, I mean, it's called a white paper on them to make sure that they've been properly cleaned and disposed of, and they're not ending up in a landfill somewhere. And the company that does that then will try to sell them, or they will be sold.
So yeah, that's the rough breakdown. We'll reuse, like you said, we'll reuse what we can, and we'll sell or recycle what we can. And then kind of perpetual services and support, so licensing for software that we use, warranties that may expire, that we want to extend. We don't have a lot to cut. We, the Kajit is that hotspot that we send home with students that don't, that don't have internet at home. So that's one option. It's always been on there, we've never cut it. Every year, we've been kind of been able to work with them to keep the costs down. Helped us, though, in the last three or four years is E-Rate. It's federal, the federal government will subsidize, they subsidize our internet connection, that's been going on for a long time. But they allow us to subsidize things like network switches, wireless access points, UPSs. It's based on your free and reduced lunch bill, so we actually get a 50% discount on all that equipment. We have two more years out of it, and once that's gone, it's gone unless they renew it. So that's really helped us the last three or four years, because it's given us a 50% refund, basically, on a lot of that stuff. So we're utilizing that as much as we can, and we're shifting stuff around, we're using old equipment. So that's kind of where we're at with the cuts.
So in case that wasn't clear, what Scott's been able to do is with those rebates, he'll buy things from their scheduled for 18-19 budget in 17-18, because he got the rebate. So it reduces the need in 18-19. So he's done that a couple of years, so now this year. The things that are in the 18-19, applied for 18-19, out of this year's current budget, because we saved some money. So he does a really good job of maximizing the dollars, and as I am with all our budget, we're conservative in what we budget, so that we don't have an unpleasant surprise when computers are more expensive and we can't replace everything.
Through an approval process, so there is a potential that we won't get it. But that's what my numbers reflect, is if we won't. So across the next, you know, this is our five-year plan. This number stays pretty consistent, it's a product that we bought, you know, two or three years ago that we amortized over five years. Something that needs to be updated, the hardware is the same thing. Every year, there's Chromebooks, laptops, iPads that need to be replaced. And then same with services, this services number, I honestly would, I wouldn't be surprised if it goes up over the years, because it seems like every year we're adding another service. Any questions?
And then you'll have this in your budget, obviously.
Yes, I will.
When is that coming? Well, I'm going to talk a little budget over the high-level budget next, and then we'll be working all these. I will get that worked in, in that five-year budget projection, so that we have that.
Perfect. Thank you. And I guess that would, let's go to Keith, you'll be next on that five-year budget forecast.
Surprise that it's a state budget. You should have them present it.
That would be awesome. I, I thought Jamie was going to present it, because he's been studying all about this, and he's now an expert. So Jamie can come and correct me if I make a mistake.
It's too hard for somebody else.
So when I, when I do a budget projection, it really is. I can, the five-year budget can change dramatically if I change one of these assumptions. This year, we're a little more certain on where we are for the 18-19 budget than we were last year, because the state budget is settled, so a lot less variables we need to study. So you won't see, last year I did, I think, six different scenarios. Counts, open enrollment counts, really are the variables that we have in the budget right now that we can't control or have little control over. And then the variables that we control, then would be staffing related to that, because that's the majority of our budget. We also have factored in there, the per pupil rate, the state is going to go up. The budget was passed, it goes back down to 630, so we get that increase this year, and we lose part of it for next year, unless something changes in the 19, 20, 21 state budget. So there's a little reduction there coming, and you'll see that in the numbers a little bit, I'll point that out. I have factored in a 2% wage increase. About that number, and that's a big number, so if that gets up to 7%, it really affects our budget. The last couple of years, we've gone below the 5%, and it's helped us reduce our need for budget cuts. And then I have no increase in anything that's non-salary budget on the expenditure side, unless it's tied to a specific grant program. So we've got those things factored in. And no staff FTE changes are in the base projection. So every year I do this, I tell the board that, and I want people to know that you're going to see a large deficit as it goes forward. And I do that on purpose, because I want you as a board, and I want the community to know, this is what happens if we don't balance our budget. Balance our budget. And I just want to emphasize that, and I will on that slide as well. We will balance our budget, but I want you to know the results if we don't, and what happens if we don't make those budget cuts. Every year, we've had to make budget cuts. We'll have to make budget cuts for the rest of my career, I predict, because that's just the way the state budget works and the way the factors go. So, as I said, the student counts are really what drive things. So this is our resident student count, so it's not our head count, but it's how many students do we have that live in the district? And you can see, we've got history there going from 2013 all the way to 2023. I think the more interesting chart is the one on the right, which shows the change from year to year. Was a big hit in our budget, and there's declining enrollment protect, protections in the revenue formula. So actually, we had a year delay on when it hit our budget. But these are why we have large budget reductions from year to year, when we see these big years. One of the good things that you see in 2019, we have actually a projected increase. It's the first one I've had in any five-year budget plan. Stabilizing a little bit as far as our resident, and the decline, I predict, is going away. The way the projections look, if we, if we go out 10 years, we'd see that we're stabilizing on our resident count right around that 2,150 student number, as much as I can predict eight or 10 years out. So this isn't even a head count, this is just the resident students. So open enrollment will be added on top of that to get to our head count. So our head count right now is about 3,200 students, so. And these are, these are FTEs, and so 4K is in there at 60% not full. So that number, when you, if you count heads, is a little, is larger than that. We don't have expenditures for homeschool, we don't count homeschool, we don't get aid for homeschool. So the homeschool students are not included anywhere in any of those things. Open enrollment out students are included in this FT, because they're counted in our revenue limit calculation and our aid calculation. And then we have, there, and we lose the aid. So maximum revenue limit. So what you'll see here is 2018, which is the current budget that we are in right now, 22,700,000 is what we have this year. So you see it's dropping each year, and, and that's really what our problem is. The revenue limit is not giving us any growth or any increase in expenses. And hasn't changed. So our revenue limit really has capped us from a tax levy standpoint, and we cannot levy more than what the revenue limit allows. If we would, the state would just take it right away from us in aid. So there's no reason we would ever want to over levy, but we also don't want to under levy, because we would lose some of that levy authority in future. Why is there such a big negative for 2019? It's because we had a fairly significant drop in number of students, resident students, last year. So that's where that happens. It's a one-year delay, because there's whole harmless protections in that formula. And last year, when I presented the budget at the annual meeting, I mentioned that we had about 470,000. Next, we look at revenue limit, as I mentioned, pretty much been capped and locked in. This is where Act 10 came in, and we, and we reduced our revenue limit significantly. We had a couple of years where they increased it, but now we're pretty much locked in. And everything I hear from the state is, that's not going to change. Per pupil aid, which is a different formula outside the revenue limit. So as I mentioned, we're getting a $200 per student increase in per pupil aid. They're doing that instead of increasing the revenue limit. General aid composition, just shows, the first bar is. Just wanted you to see, the big important thing is you see our secondary aid increasing over time, which is a good sign, that tells us that we are increasing a little bit as far as our, our aid percentage, which we hadn't been up until this past year. This past year, we saw an increase, and the model is predicting that that increase is going to continue over time.
Keith, what's our percent at right now, state aid?
Uh, we're probably, I'd have to look at, I believe it's about 40%. And I have a slide here that'll give you a little breakdown of our, all our revenue and how that percentage breaks down. So revenue by source, local, which is almost all property taxes. Plus some of the other grants that they have out there, Common School Fund for the library, transportation aid, and some other state grants. But if you notice, our open enrollment revenue is almost as much as what we're getting in state aid at this point. And, and I'll talk a little later about this, but we, we were one of the leaders in the state as far as open enrollment and the revenue. It's about 25% of total budgeted expenditures. But I want to emphasize, this is not just property tax, it's also student fees, it's anything else that we're generating locally. So gating missions, it can be a lot of things that we have in that local bucket, but taxes is by far the biggest. Budgeted revenues by source, I want to point out that the scale on this is a little unusual. So the blue bar is local sources, the gold bar is state sources. So what it shows is that trend, that state sources are going down, but now they're starting to come back up. And this is historical, so we're starting to see that increase in state sources. Trying to show you our federal revenue going down. And if I go out, this is historical, so this is through this year. If I go out, we're predicting the federal revenue will take a dip next year as well, with the rumors of what we're hearing will happen in a federal budget and will happen with some of our grants. So we're expecting a fairly noticeable decrease in federal revenue. Historical property taxes, what you see is just the trend. All I really want to point out here is we're seeing that trend of our mill rate going down, so, and our total levy going down. And I see that, the model's predicting that to continue as well. So there's a breakdown in there of where it comes from. Bar will go away. So we'll see our mill rate continue to go down, and the model is predicting our mill rate to continue to decline, which is great news for our residents, and I think great news for the district overall, that if we're declining in mill rate and tax levy, I think that helps our, our community and helps build community support. Lose federal money, there's no way to make it up. We can't make it up with taxes, because it's outside the revenue limit. So if we get a, say, a 10% federal grant cut, we have no way to make up that cost. It has to be reductions in what we do. Funds combined, so it includes the general fund, the special ed fund, the food service fund, the community service fund, all those different funds. So here's a breakdown, so usually I just talk about Fund 10, that's the red here, and this is why I just talk about Fund 10 most time. That's our operating fund where we run all of our educational programs except for special ed. Leave all the other funds, but I wanted you to just see that breakdown between the funds and how, how we are allocated. and how we are allocated. So 80% of our costs are in the operating fund or Fund 10. And then what do we spend the money on by object? So what you see here is salaries and benefits. Includes debt service and all the other things. So when we get into, if this were just a Fund 10 graph, this red and blue section would be even bigger and they'd be over 85% of our budget. The reason I think that's important for you to know is when we do have to make budget reductions, why we need to look at staff, two reasons. One, because it's one of the things we make a staffing change. That's, we've really gotten thin on everything other than staffing, that it's hard to do any reductions that aren't staff related. So with that said, I'm going to throw up a number with, a slide with way too many numbers. The number I want you to focus on is the surplus deficit number in the middle. That's the number where the projection is telling us how much our projected budget is. Balance the budget. And as I mentioned, we didn't balance the budget for any of these years. So when you get to the fifth year of the projection, we've got almost $3 million deficit. And we have down here, ending fund balance, the second from the bottom line, our fund balance is down to 600, less than 600,000, where we're currently over 8 million. Need to see the importance of that with ongoing expenditures. So the good news is, really good budget year for us. We only have 264,000 projected in budget cuts. It sounds strange to say only 264,000. Last year, I think I was up here showing 800,000, and I've had years where it's over a million for the current year. So this is a much more budget cutting. Based on enrollment. So it won't be any program changes. It'll just be, if we need less sections in a grade level or less FTE at the middle school and high school, we'll be able to do those reductions, keep our class sizes where they are, and make some reductions. And we're very close to being balanced when I make those reductions. Balance. So I talked about this. If we don't balance our budget by the fifth year of the projection, we have a $3 million deficit and our fund balance is down to 600,000 from 8 million. So I just wanted you to see that and know that's why it's so important that we budget. I want to remind people of that. So here's why we see that deficit. Money into expenditures. I did not increase any of our non-salary budgets at all, and we still see expenditures going up faster than revenue. And that's the reason districts are struggling with the revenue limit. The way the revenue limit works, it really caps our growth of our revenue side and forces us to minimize our income, so we have to reduce our expenditures to match it. So I don't want to make it sound like this is a horrible picture. If I'd have done this previous years, five years ago, you've seen this going up even faster and this going up even slower. We're doing okay, and we've got a small budget reduction projected for next year, so it's very manageable, but it's important that you realize this is why we see a big reduction in our special education budget. So it really is also a core education budget. It's where all the programs for identified students are maintained. And I highlighted the top line in there because that's really the driver as far as our Fund 10 budget goes from 27. So we don't levy into Fund 27. Instead, we levy the money in Fund 10, do operating transfer. And the number I really want to point out is for 2019, I have a reduction in federal aid. So our transfer is up 6.5, almost 7%. So that's part of the problem. And here's where you see the federal sources I have down over 11%. Do more towards the worst case scenario. I'm hopeful that it comes out better than this, but I think we need to plan on that reduction because what I'm hearing from my contacts who are up to date on what's happening in Washington DC is the plan on at least a 10, but it may be more depending on the program. So we have to be prepared for that. All the salary and benefits increase. So here's your revenues and expenditures, historical. And then here they are going forward. So revenues and expenditures always matching Fund 27 because we do that. On the Fund 10 revenues. So trends in Ashwadhan. What's happening in Ashwadhan that are, what's changing here? What's happening that we need to be aware of? This first slide shows diversity. So what you'll see is the bottom part, it's just something we need to be aware of. You saw the continuous improvement plans and they were looking at some of the subgroups and focusing on those. Here's why. Because we're down to 77% in the white. These other groups have gotten larger and we just need to be aware of that and make sure that we're keeping the, minimizing the achievement gap for closing that gap every We've seen is our low income, which is the blue line here, low income, percentage of low income students increasing. And actually for this, last year, we saw a slight decrease. Sometimes I worry a little about that. I think this line is misleading. I think it should be higher. We have some, we have a high number of families who don't file for free reduced lunch. Worked very hard to try to get them to, but if it's showing 30%, I think our real number's probably 40% because not everyone fills out the paperwork. But the trend line is what's important. We've seen a significant increase over the last five years, but we're starting to see And not see increases. We've tried to maintain our class size, but we are watching it a little tighter. And every year, we watch it and the principals love it when I give them their staffing amounts and they have reductions even though their student head count isn't changing or is changing Staff ratio. So we were back in 2007, we were at 13.5. Now we're up to 15, just over 15, almost 16. So we are seeing slight increases in student to teacher ratio, but we're still right in the middle of comparables. Increases well. And this is something I'm going to show you in a little bit, some comparables to other districts, but it's one of those things, we've had discussions about where are we administratively? Do we need to do something? And you see we're up a fair amount in that trend with the number of FTE we have as far For us to compare to. This time, I selected districts that were similar to us in open enrollment incoming percentage. So these are, and we are the second highest percentage of open enrollment incoming students in the state that's not an online school. So we are at 19% or 41% of our students. This year, we were ahead of them until this year. When you look at total numbers, Wawa Tosa has a higher number than we do. They're down here, but they're at 17% because they are just a lot bigger district. So we'll use this group of districts to do some comparisons to see how we compare to other districts. Is where are districts getting their revenue? So why is this important? Are you property rich, property poor? We're very, the light blue bar is property taxes and the green bar is state aid. So what you'll see here is harder because they're shaded open. Is a very small on the lake down near Milwaukee district that's lower and Kohler's a little lower as far as state aid percentage. Salary and benefit comparison. The number I like to look at is dollars spent per student. We are spending less than the average as far as salary and benefits per student. We spend less per student than the state average. Most of these districts are spending more per student than the state average. So I think it says a lot that we're able to attract students and still be below the state average in spending and we're still getting the results and attracting the students. We have very senior staff and with retirements, we talked about how many years of service they had. We have a much more senior staff than any of the other districts in this comparison when you look at average years of service. So I wanted to give some type of graphic to show you that. One of the reasons is we're not growing, so we're not hiring as many young staff as Student to teacher ratio. We talked about, I showed the history for Ashwadhan. So here we are, students pro FTE. We're with the other comparable open enrollment districts, we're right in the ballpark. We're in the same range that they are. I think it's very close. Then when you look at average salary, we're a little higher. Made that a focus of our hiring and we've hired some experienced educators instead of hiring new educators in several places so we can get quality staff. We think that's our differentiator, our most important factor in our success is our staff. Why is that? Because we've, through our budget cuts over the last 18 years, we've reduced non-teacher positions. So we were about average on the teacher to student ratio, but when it comes to all staff, we were less staff than other districts. That's an indicator of how much we had to cut, how much we've cut. Hard for us to look at non-teaching positions because we're very thin compared to other districts in that staffing area. That's what I've got for you to kind of give you an overview of where we are for a five year projection. As I said, are there any questions with where we are right now?
Steve and Keith, excellent job as always. Remember, budget is just a budget, right?
It's just a, just a way we're going to allocate our assets.
And we, this has come up just because of the fact that we are adding a new school board representative. And we just had a little bit of wording that we wanted to change. Word liaison person, that person cannot be a staff member, whether it's part-time or full-time. That's the only thing that we were going to change. Correct? And then we look for a motion to waive the first reading of this.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now can we get a motion then to approve this?
I'll move to approve the wording as you stated.
Okay. And can we get a second? Could we move the first one?
Oh, we didn't take far off.
Oh, you know what? We forgot. Lovely donation we had tonight.
I make the motion gladly.
Second. Okay, got motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
And the choice what we made was for Mike Mater to be our new school liaison person. And we will contact him and have him hopefully for our next meeting, right, Chuck?
Yep.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, got motion in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We should say that we had three really good candidates.
Really good candidates. Okay, action item number three is retirement request. And this is, oh, we don't name. Are we making an action on this? What do you decide we're doing? We did talk about it. Okay, so basically the board had a request from Jill Sepi Gonzalez, Chepe Gonzalez, to be able to retire with benefits. She's, because of the fact that she was hired when they had 15 years. 15 years, and we approved that tonight.
So this is a retirement for the 2019, 2020 year.
So we would need a motion for that then also. We're going to do that now. Okay, Keith stole our thunder. And we want to recommend that each of the teachers receive a $500 stipend. That would be Phil Layden, Corey Hanson, Jeremy Meyer, Tom Barnhart, and Dave Stroud. We'd be looking for a motion on that. Good to be able to spend money that way.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, just to mention that we would need to change the date on the March board meeting and we're moving that to. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Board and superintendent communications. Do you have anything?
Some topics. The next board meeting is to review final candidates for the superintendent and the search for, will be scheduled for Wednesday, February 21st at 8:30. The next scheduled board meeting to select final candidates for the superintendent is scheduled for Monday, March 12th. Yes, I did. I did. And somebody didn't change it on here.
Well, it wasn't true.
Okay. You could put that in parentheses. March 12th. Okay? Anything else?
So we don't have a meeting on the 28th?
Right, we moved it up.
Moved it up.
Yeah. Right after that interview. Anything else? I can make a motion, I need a motion to adjourn?
I would move to adjourn.